Good evening and welcome to the January 17th, 2018 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up tonight is the approval of our minutes from two past meetings. The first is for our meeting from December 6th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of December 6th, 2017 as read to the record.
Second? It's been moved in second and I'll note that Matt, you were absent for that meeting, so I guess I'll abstain for you. It's moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention, so that's 301. And the other set of minutes is from our January 3rd, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of January 3rd, 2018 as read to the record.
Second? Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, we would have ordinarily recorded plots, are there any tonight?
Yes, sir. We have one plat for your consideration tonight.
Okay.
Plat number RP 7750-2017, GAC Holdings LLC at 220, or excuse me, 227 East Deer Park Drive. Staff has reviewed the plat and it is ready for your approval.
Thanks, Ray. What is that, we didn't actually have the agenda tonight, what is that for?
There are small changes to the parking lot and they have recorded a forest conservation easement.
Gotcha.
This is for Gaithersburg Air Conditioning Company.
Okay, but it's more of a technical documentation.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions?
No.
If not, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the record plats, read into the record.
Second? Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Hello, Sally, how are you? First up on the application agenda tonight is signed permits for sign-15659-2018 Camden Washingtonian Apartments at 10201 Washingtonian Boulevard. This is an icon sign approval in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone presented from staff with Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. Staff is before you to present sign permit application for the Camden Washingtonian Apartments located at 1020 Washingtonian Boulevard. The applicant's requesting to, or pressing approval to install a 52.5 square foot blade sign for the building. The sign will be located right on the southeast elevation facing Washingtonian Boulevard. The proposed sign will have the name of the Camden Apartments and an image of a hummingbird, which is considered an icon sign pursuant to Section 24-212J. Icon signs must be approved by the planning commission. The location of the sign was approved by the planning commission as part of site plan SP-6106-2014. Staff wants to note that, if you look here on the screen, the planning commission approved the location of the sign to be here, but the applicant had just adjusted it to move it over here to make it more visually visible from Washingtonian Boulevard. So the sign has been reviewed and approved by the property owner.
And the only thing we're really concerned about tonight is the icon, the signs are compliant, okay. Excellent. Any questions?
No.
Is anyone here in the audience here to testify? Okay. So Jasmine, what's the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report findings and recommendation grant sign-15659-2018 Camden Washingtonian Apartments finding it conformant with Section 24-212 of the city code.
And no conditions?
No conditions.
Okay, thanks very much. Any concerns over the recommendation?
Hummingbird seems perfectly appropriate to me.
The connection between Camden and a hummingbird, I don't think I get it. Should be an Oriole, right?
Yeah. Or a Raven.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission grant sign-15659-2018 Camden Washingtonian Apartments approval finding it conformant with Section 24-212 of the city code with no conditions.
Second? So moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jasmine. And we move on to the next section of our agenda, which is site plans. There's one this evening for AFP-7770-2017, 127 Thurgood Street. This is to demolish the existing house and build a new two-story with a partially finished attic and walkout basement in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. This will be an amendment to final site plan. Also presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just, I will be recusing myself from the application because I have voted in my capacity as a Kentlands Historic Trust member.
Oh, very good. Okay, thanks for that. Please come back, though. All right, Jasmine, please go ahead.
So staff's before you to present an amendment to final site plan application for the property located at 127 Thurgood Street. The subject property is situated within the Kentland subdivision and the zone MXD. The subject property is approximately 12,786 square feet and contains a two-story, single-family detached home. The applicant's requesting to demolish the existing house and build a new two-story house with a partially finished attic and a walkout basement. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-172A, which requires the planning commission to approve all amendments to a final site plan. So this evening I have Andy Steggles, who's the homeowner, who's going to present the application.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. So Jasmine asked me to put together kind of just a presentation, just to walk you through how we got to where we are and what we're planning to do and why. So it shouldn't take very long, but if that's okay, and then maybe questions at the end, if that's all right. So as was mentioned, we currently have a three-bedroom, two-bath house. We have a basement that we finished in 2014. It's got one bed and somewhat of a bed and one bath. It's a decent sized lot. It's very unusual for the Kentlands, but it's much bigger than a traditional lot and it backs into like a wooded area. I've got some more photos in a moment. The current house is 2,700 square feet or 2,800 square feet, not counting the basement. And the garage is, you can't quite see it because of the trees there, but there's a separation with a non-air-conditioned space in between, like a mudroom. And then the picture in the bottom right, I think it is, the way you can see the red line that I've just kind of messily drawn from one house to another, the blue dot in the corner is where we're currently renting. So we've moved out, we've been going through this process now for about a year and a half because we've had a lot of steps to go through to get where we are. A good friend of mine lives in the house where we're currently renting. He's military and so he just worked out, even though the timing was just a little bit off. So that's where we are. And I mention that just because, you know, for us, we want to be extremely diligent about the disruption in the neighborhood and being right there as literally as close as we can possibly be, you know, so we experience the majority of whatever is going to be there and, you know, we're not going to go away, leave everything happened, then come back and, you know, whatnot. So just a little bit of background, so Kelly, my wife, is behind me. We got married 2012. We moved to the Kentlands from Bethesda, rented for a year because I wasn't sure whether I'd like it, and within just a couple of days just fell in love with the place. And then 2014, we had a baby, which is our, two kids before and this is our third. And then we, the owner of the place we were renting in the Kentlands sold it to us. So we ended up, which is where the house we have now that we're looking to reconstruct. And then last year, we had, well, just 2016, we had another baby, so now it's our fourth kid. And so we're finally at a point where like, I mean, it was a bit of a push before, but we'd really like a bigger home. We've looked everywhere. We've, you know, so many open houses, we've looked at so many places, but every, everything, it always comes down to the neighborhood. We just love where we are, you know, we love our neighbors and, you know, we just, we want to stay where we are. And so we started a process after searching for, you know, over a year. And we finally said, all right, we committed to just staying where we are if we can make it work. But the challenge was the, even though the plot was quite big, the majority of the plot was conservation easement. So, and it was ridiculous. It came within like just a few yards of the back of our house. I mean, it was just a crazy, you know, but it is what it is. We knew that when we bought the house and it's a beautiful area and whatnot. So we started talking to the city. Actually, first of all, we started talking to, actually, yeah, the city and then our neighbors and then back to the city again. But, you know, it said, is there anything we can do about the easement? And, you know, Greg and Jasmine and other members of the team were really, you know, really open to ideas and they, they mentioned this, this process where you can, even though we own a land, you could basically buy back some of the easement, right, in order to remove the easement. It's, I forget what they call it, but it's like a green replacement. You buy green land elsewhere and it kind of trades it out, but only, only a certain degree. You can't do the whole, the whole thing.
Sure.
And nor did we want to. So we went through that process. That took, you know, probably about eight months or so to go through with all the surveys, plans, you know, environmental assessments and everything else. And we ended up coming up with a pretty nice compromise, I think, that, you know, where we agreed to plant new trees and do new things, which, you know, we all agreed to. And that was completed about six months ago or something like that. So, and then we, so once that was completed, we then went back to, actually, before we actually commenced that journey, went back to the neighbors, talked to all the neighbors and just said, look, here's a plan, you know, here's a deal. We're, we're looking at buying back some of this conservation easement so we can reconstruct the house, maybe even do a tear down, but, you know, probably renovate because that's the way we were leaning at the time. And do you support it? Because frankly, we were like, I don't want to go through this whole process if, if I'm going to get a lot of opposition, it's just not worth it. And every, everybody we spoke to fully endorsed it, signed a document, which got in here to say that they, the support, and this was for the conservation easement, but verbally it was, you know, relayed that it was to get to this point. And so worked with the city, managed to get it all, the conservation easement, threw a lot of back and forth, get it taken care of. And then started on finding a builder and we were going to remodel. And it got to the point where we finally got the quote with the design and we ran the design by the city and everything was looking good, but then the price came in and it was like, wow, for that, we could just get a new house, which seemed ridiculous, but, you know, it was just, you know, and then we're not dealing with 20-year-old structure, which isn't old, but it's, there's a lot of unknowns. And so when we looked at all the pros and cons, the one reason why we, the main reason why, two main reasons why we didn't want to tear down, one is the environmental impact with the, you know, just the land, landfill, and then the other was just the disruption to, to the neighborhood. So as we started talking to more people, we found there were two pretty good solutions to, two reasons to, against both of those. One was the, we found a charity that we could work with to what they called deconstruct the house, where they use under-skilled workers to come in and they train them, they give them skills by training them. So we make a donation to the charity and, which pays for this labor to come in and deconstruct it instead of just knocking it down. So they take, strip everything out, everything possibly, you know, and then all of that that they strip out gets donated to the charity that then resells it, recycles it and so on. So it's a really great program. And so that, you know, it doesn't get rid of 100%, but it gets, you know, down to the copper pipes, like everything that is salvageable, it will be salvaged. So we've, you know, that adds about three weeks to the timeline is what they spend. And then once they're finished, the demo company comes in and just gets rid of the rest, which should take about a week. So, so that was the one issue. And then the other issue was the disruptions of the neighborhood. And the timeline we were given to renovate was, you know, it was about a year, you know, and that's what they say and who knows how long it'll actually be. And so then, and we were looking at the level of this, you know, disruption caused by that and it would become pretty obvious that there may be more disruption at some points, but the timeframe would be much less if we just build a model house, like a new kind of model where, you know, and they've just done one in, the builder we chose, Mitchell and Best, just someone in Washington Woods. And we went and, you know, looked at that house and looked at the timeframe and it came in in about six months from, from start to finish, you know, everything just, you know, from the day they, they broke ground. So ours is more complex than that one, but the estimate is seven months. You know, I, who knows, but I've only got the references to go on and every reference we spoke to has hit their timeframe. So, you know, so it will be more disruption because they've got more like full demo, but the timeframe is much less, which I think it nets less disruption than the, the other option. So those were the, the main considerations when we were looking at one or the other. So, you know, I mentioned some of these earlier, just why not just move to a bigger house and, you know, we could get a, you know, some other house somewhere and, but again, I just love where we live. I love the community, I love the neighborhood, I love the walkability and, and just anybody who knows the Kentlands knows exactly what I'm talking about. And, you know, and our neighbors rock. I mean, I just, you know, it's, it's hit or miss, as we all know, when you move anywhere, it's like, the house could be a, like, just a fantastic house, but who knows? It's, you know, it's just, I, you know, really like our neighbors and I just want to stay there with them. So on the wish list, we, we had a bit aggressive, but a six bedrooms, which is, you know, five for the immediate family and one for a guest, two offices because we both work from home pretty regularly and Cuddy full-time, myself, you know, part-time. And then just, it's, the current house is very dark, so we just wanted a lot of light. So, so here's just a few graphics to help understand the conservation easement. So we, we removed approximately half of the conservation easement. You can see in yellow, that's the bit that we removed, but there's still a lot of conservation easement left at the back there. The goal was not to build on all of the yellow, we just, we knew that we needed a bunch of space to, to handle, you know, to like move dirt to without disrupting the easements and things like that. So we tried to get more than we needed just to cater for that, which I think we've, you know, we've got a decent job. And this is the proposed new home. I mean, it, you know, the Kentlands seem pretty happy with it. It's really in style with the, you know, the, the look and the feel of the other houses, but it's, you know, everything about the materials and whatnot, it's all going to be, you know, just a nice house. The square footage is significantly increased, but the majority of it is just because of that, you know, the additional floor going up as well as the house is going back and it's also slightly wider, whereas we had a big mudroom between the, the house and the garage. It's now kind of blends, so utilizing a lot of that space more effectively. So, you know, still, it's, you know, going from 2,800, I think it was square feet to over 6,000 square feet. So it's a significant jump, but that does include, you know, a four-season porch that we've got on the deck at the back and, you know, it's a decent part of it. So the red here is the, the existing house footprint and the yellow is the, the proposed footprint. What I will say is where you go back beyond the red, like most of that, like about, I think about two-thirds of that is deck. So, you know, but the screen porch will go up to the, you know, like, there's going to be a roof on that, but then the other side of it, there's no roof, it's just, you know, so it's not, again, we wanted to be really cognizant for the neighbors, our immediate left and right neighbors and, and so we, you know, we could have just pushed the house further back, but we didn't want to do that because I don't want them to come out of the backyard and just see this big like wall. So they've, you know, they've been really cool about it and supportive, so, and this is where we ended up. They've seen all the plans and they, you know, have not had any objections from it, from, from them. Just, again, another just aerial view, thanks to Google, for, to give you an idea of what is at the back. So you can see the, the red kind of marker is, is where our house is and then at the back you can see the wooded area. So the visual, at the front, the visual's going to be, it'd be much nicer than it is now, but it's, it's, you know, it's going to be nothing out of whack, but at the back it's, it's going to be significant, you know, the, the change. And then the other challenge we had was a public utility easement. We, the current house, the steps of the current house go right over the PUE line. And, and so the challenge was, well, if, we don't want to push house further back because of the neighbors and it will obstruct their view and so, you know, but if we build a new house, it's got to be, you know, it can't go over the easement, right? So we're like, well, maybe we should just renovate because we don't want to push the house any further back, like, we don't want to use up that nice space and whatever else. So we spoke with the city and we're like, you know, what if, I mean, we're just exploring crazy options, what if, you know, what if we rebuilt the house and just left the stairs, right? You know, I was joking, but these are the sort of things we were kind of exploring. And then the city said, well, if you can build the stairs in a way where they're non-permeable so they can be moved if ever the utility needs to get under them, and you get all of the utilities to sign off that the new plan is okay, and they're cool with it, then they would support that. And so that was the approach. I didn't think we were going to make it work, but we, the architects came up with a way in which the stairs were non-permeable, they were bolted in and can be unbolted and moved. And the, all the utilities signed off on it, so, which has been submitted to, to the city for record. So we finally got that, but that, again, just part of this, the timeframe, it's just a markup of the stairs. In terms of the elevations, these are obviously not the colored ones, but just to give you an idea. And then this is the back of the house. You can see like there's a big screen deck and, you know, on the one side it goes up and on the other side it doesn't. Also have a balcony area coming out over the, the master suite at the top. And then this is a side elevation from, from our one neighbor. And again, if you consider the, most of the, the decking area, like that's the new part, the rest of the house is, is mostly on the current footprints, it's just, is a small piece of it that's sticking out. And then the, the other side is sticking out more, but again, it's, it's the covered deck. So we, after we finally got all that, we went through the HOA and we've been working with the HOA and the KHT in, in the, the Kentlands and DPZ, the architects, been going back and forth with them, they've been giving us kind of design guidelines in terms of, you know, what the, the intent of the Kentlands was and we obviously, you know, we want the house to fit in nicely and to the, you know, complimentary. So we had the, the first approval, which was mainly for the footprints of the house so then we could move forward and do all, you know, a bunch of other stuff. And, and then we came back a few months later and, and got the second approval. There was just some minor things such as the color of the, the windows, we want black windows so that, we've got to go back to them about that, you know, just the, the frames, but, and the gutter colors, but there was nothing significant, you know, the footprint's been approved, the structure and all the, the main things. And that kind of brings to the, the end, but I mean, in, in summary, you know, candidly, this is a huge investment for us and it's not one we're taking lightly. It's, it's not something I frankly will probably, you know, would, it, it's not something that you're going to flip, right? That we're never going to make our money back on this, which, the point being is this is a home for life, for all of our family and multi-generational home. God forbid, I hope we never move from here, ever, if we go through with this. And, you know, just from a functional perspective, we want more, more room, more, more functional living space. You know, we've, we've gone through this partner, this process, we've partnered with the city, we've talked through, worked with the HOA through the whole way and it's actually been a really, really great process, have all been really, really good to work with. You know, for us, this really is an investment in our community. We absolutely believe in the Kentlands and, you know, and talking to DPZ, they're like, yeah, this is about the time when, even though, you know, this isn't, this is the first time in the Kentlands this has been done, but this is about the time when it starts to happen and, you know, there will be more. It may take a while, but, but there will be more. And personally, you know, I, after 10 years in the military and living all over the world, I got to tell you, this is the first place I have ever lived where I truly felt was home. And that to me is a big deal. So, you know, and it speaks volumes to the, I think, to the community that we, we live in. So in summary, you know, we love our neighborhood, we love the community, we want to stay here. So I will say, having said all that, we, you know, I mentioned earlier that we talked to all the neighbors and we got them on board and, you know, everybody was cool with it because we didn't want to go through the process if there were objections. We did have a neighbor speak out, you know, after we got the plans and we got the, you know, the, the HOA approvals, went around again and talked about the plans, talked about the change of direction where we're going to knock down and reconstruct. And we have a, a neighbor who lives opposite who was complete, you know, abat turn, just vehemently against it because of, mostly because of the disruption that it will cause them, because they, you know, they're mostly retired, they're in the house most of the time. And, you know, I've spoke to our contractor, our builder at length about this, who is here as well, from Mitchell and Best, you know, just to, you know, have absolute assurance that everything that can and will be done to mitigate the, the disruption. And again, part of my commitment is we're moving, you know, we have moved across the street, so we're going to be there. And I don't want to live somewhere where the, you know, the neighbors are upset, so I'm going to be all over it in terms of just trying to do everything I can to make sure it's, that everybody's informed, there's a process, plan and so on. So I hope that, you know, we can move forward with it. We've come through a long journey and again, we just want to stay in the community.
Great. Well, thanks for the presentation. I have to say, it's probably, you've probably done a more thorough job on this one house than sometimes we see on, on whole subdivisions or major commercial buildings, so my, my compliments to you for that. You certainly done your homework and thank you for that. I'm going to ask some questions that are going to sound a little dry compared to the larger aspirational presentation you gave, only because one of the things we do, and if, if you look at the zoning ordinance, we have to make, make findings based on compatibility and they're, they tend to be kind of dry, dry topics, but I'm going to clarify some of those things just so we have it in sort of the discussion and the record. And it'll be between you and Jasmine, I'm not sure who will know the answer at this point. I guess the first is, what I pick up from the presentation is the net change in height is something like four feet, is that about right? A plus four feet from, from the old house to the new house?
Yeah, I think it was 29 to 33, something like that.
Around four feet. And do you know, relatively speaking, is that data pretty consistent throughout the neighborhood? I know there's a lot up and down, there's a lot of variety on that side of the, of the Kellens, so I, I'm guessing that four feet, there's probably that kind of a variation anyway along the streetscape, is that, is that fair to say? I mean, this isn't like the one-
So the house, that, the road is a little bit of a slope.
Yeah.
And, and so the house to the right is higher than ours.
Is already taller, yeah.
The house to the left is, is lower. So how's, it will go up a few feet, but it shouldn't be significant.
There's a lot up and down anyway in the, in the original.
And it is within the, the restrictions for the, you know, there's a limit, but it's well within that.
Right, right. So on the materials, I guess the type is, have the type of materials been approved by, through, through the HOA's process or is it really just, and just color is the outstanding issue or there's still materials left to be?
Most of the materials have been approved. There's a few, like, you know, there's a few things we need, we're going to have to go back for changes with some of it because as we're going through and we put in these selections and, but it's, there's nothing significant. I mean, the outside is going to be-
Hardy shingle.
Hardy shingle on the outside and the metal roof, black metal roof on the top.
Those are both approved materials in our neighborhood.
You need to come up to the microphone.
Yes, I'm here. Those are both approved materials in our guidelines for the main materials.
Can you just introduce yourself too, sorry?
I'm Kelly Steggles, I'm homeowner for 127 Thurgood.
And the windows are-
They're Jeldwin.
So those have been approved, but the color still is outstanding, I think you mentioned-
I think in our, in our last, in our present, or our approval, we had said Anderson, but we went and made a change to Jeldwin or we want to make a change, so we need to go back and get that approved.
Yeah, I think I'm really going more for material and color than I am specific-
Okay.
...manufacturer, that you've got agreement from, through the design guideline process that the material is okay, is that right?
Primarily, you know, there's so many things to go through. For example, the windows, there's nothing in the guidelines that specifies the color. It has to be certain materials. So they asked us to do a color rendering of the house to, to see what the black windows would look like.
Okay, so you're still working through that with-
Right, so we've done that, now we need to go back to the next month's meeting and go through that approval process again.
The front, if I, if I read the, the diagramatics- Um, the front, if I, if I read the, the diagrammatics, I plan right, the front elevation, so the, the, the point where the front wall is essentially is the same place it is now. So that relative to the streetscape, it doesn't, it doesn't jet out any further. I think the porch is a little bit different configuration, but generally the mass of the building is about where it is now.
It's, I think it's within a foot or something like, it's really close, I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. And the, the dormers, those are in um, habitable spaces then? Those are not just decorative fake dormers, right?
Right.
Upper rooms in the garage?
Uh, yes.
Those are all real, real spaces, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and then the, I think that rendering pretty much says it, and I know um, the design guidelines would get after this about the materials turn the corner completely, right? They aren't just stopped, you know, a few feet back.
Right, so what you see um, is on the front, it is a hardy shingle and it goes along the side until the back is a different, it's just a smi- a smooth siding. So, it's the same, it's gonna be the same color.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, really plain.
And the roof is metal, right, so that's, okay.
That's gonna be universal.
All right, um, any site changes in the process of doing this, are you regrading? Are you changing any of the elevations of the site? Is retaining walls, anything like that?
The grading is-
Oh, if you could introduce yourself, just-
Sorry.
And it's only so that we capture it on the record when you may say something important.
I'm Curdie, I'm with Mitchell and Best Homes. And the, uh, the, the grading is pretty much the same. I mean, it's, you know, the lot size doesn't change, the, the width is about the same. Um, the front location, so that, you know, the front grading is, is just about identical. The back, um, there's a airy way across the back. But other than that, you know, the, the grade is about the same, you know, the water flows back and-
I mean, we, we, we currently have a, like, the walkout basement right now and, and the difference being that the basement will be a little bit taller, like a, a foot taller. Um, and so, you know, but it shouldn't really affect anything kind of outside of it. I mean, the, the grading's gonna be the same, yeah.
Are you demoing the entire foundation or are you using the system you are?
Yes.
So it's completely being reexcavated, redug for, for new foundation?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the, with the site, I've been a resident for Kentlands for over twenty-five years. And uh, no Thirdgood Street as well. And Thirdgood Street's a very narrow street and the people park their cars, particularly, particularly across the street from where your house is going to be. Uh, and they park their cars on the street there and it's, it's fairly dense. What plans for construction, as far as the construction vehicles, are they gonna be restricted to the lot? Uh, when they come in, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of, I would imagine, deliveries, a lot of construction trucks going on in and out through that area. Any provisions to allow them to be able to move more freely?
Fortunately for parking wise, we have a, um, a large double wide driveway. So you can park easily four cars in the driveway right there. Um, and so that's one provision that, you know, will help with the situation.
And the other thing is because, because we're not in the house and of course, our cars are not there. And, you know, we're making a concerted effort not to park on the street. We're parking in the garage at the other, the house across the street. Um, and so, you know, as, obviously as the construction comes in, we're gonna be real diligent of that as well. But essentially, you know, the, the people that were renting a house before us, um, they did park on the street for the most part.
Right.
So, there's already two cars less on the street now and, and it hasn't begun. In terms of the, like, uh, you know, dumpster that will be put on the property, so, you know, things like that as they, as, as they tear it down. And then the, um, the side, outside of the street, there is no parking.
Right.
Um, and, you know, if you have like a, a, a big delivery vehicle or something like that, they can pull up at the side. Uh, there's still enough room, even with a car parked on the other side, to get around it. It will be tight and it's not something I'd want there for a long time, obviously, but, you know, it shouldn't cause a big, like if a, uh, you know, a truck or something pulls up with stuff, it, it shouldn't stop traffic. Like, yes, traffic can still get around it, it would just be tight, but, you know, wherever possible, any, any vehicle will be on the property itself versus on the road.
And as you said, you, you work from home right now, correct? So that you will be there more-
Right, we'll be there both of us.
Another question regarding the, um, construction. Fencing, any, what can you describe the kind of fencing that'll be put around the lot to allow the, uh, you know, the neighbors to, so the kids don't go running in there and so on and so forth? What kind of uh, walling or fencing would you have there?
Uh, sure. Uh, well, typically, we wrap the property with um, silt fence. Um, uh, we did the same thing over at Washington in Woods. And uh, that, that seemed to work fine.
Okay, so.
Okay, just on that note as well, um, we're consciously not starting the demo uh, until we've got everything absolutely lined up, because we, we don't want a big hole just sat there, right? So, you know, the, the deconstruction expected about three weeks, the demo at the end of that should immediately follow, because, you know, there's no immediate rush with the amount of time we spend anyway, there's no immediate rush. If we can, you know, we'll schedule absolutely everything out as much as possible, so-
And then the building will start.
Yeah, and then the building will start immediately after the, the demo, so.
I just wanted you to, I put up the demo exhibit on here, so they're putting a silt fence on the side yards and a filter log.
Right, and what, that's for the public so that they understand what's going on.
All right.
Yeah, I just, I agree with the chairman, you gave an exhaustive description and we really appreciate that. Um, I have a few questions regarding the, the deconstruction and construction. There's a city ordinance, um, that you can't start, you know, work, you know, before seven, I believe, and has to end at a certain time, and that's gonna be in place for the deconstruction as well.
Yeah.
Correct? The other thing that I'm concerned about is, is the, the neighborhood sign off. Were, were there physical signatures from your neighbors? Like, because you, I think you mentioned that you, you got kind of verbal, but, you know-
The neighbors, um, by the KHT rules, they don't have to sign off on it, but-
Yeah, okay.
Um, we have, we have had two, um, meetings, HOA meetings, where we had presentations that, um, people can come and attend and, um, can listen and voice their opinions and things like-
Good, I'm, I'm just where, I, I, that's good, I just wanna make sure that there's documentation, that there's no, no issues with that.
Yeah, we, again, this is very early in the process, but we, um-
These are our neighbors.
We, uh-
Well, I'm sorry to cut you off, a little bit about process, so we're asking questions and then we'll open it up-
And then you have the opportunity to-
We'll open it up to public testimony and then-
So, um, so yeah, this is in March, uh, two thousand seventeen, I, I went around, spoke to all the neighbors that I could get hold of and just explain the process. And you can see on the, uh, screen here, it's, it's, you know, all the signatures that I got, there might be more, but this is most of them. Um, you know, we're fully on board with it, with, now this was for the conservation easement. Um, and it says, I fully support, I have no objections to the, the change of the conservation easement. But as was, um, verbally, uh, uh, you know, I, I, the conversation was, here's the house we wanna end up with, here's some, you know, here's, um, the ideas we have and, and so on. Um, and, you know, and again, because I didn't wanna, we didn't wanna go through this process if there was gonna be any major objections. Um, unfortunately, I think there was, uh, you know, there, there was one that I know. I mean, I've spoken to everyone, there's one person that's voiced their, their objection strongly. Um, Hans, my, my other neighbor, I've been trying to get together with him, but we just, fortunately, I haven't been able to make it happen. But everybody else has signed off and said, yes, we're fully supportive of this. Um, verbally and, and part of the conversation. Uh, so, so there's, there's one person that has said they're against it and Hans, I haven't really had a chance to, to talk to about it, but everybody else is, um, is fully supportive.
The reason I bring it up is, um, you know, you, you, you said sign off and I, and I don't wanna mean, mean to split hairs, but, but I, you know, and you've gone to the Kentland Citizens Assembly, but my, my concern is that there's not, you know, once you start, I mean, you've gone, as I said, you've gone through this exhaustive process and, and it's really good, but I just wanna make sure that we're all clear that there's, there's gonna be, I mean, you said there was one neighbor that was concerned, but going forward, you know, there's not gonna be an issue once you start the process.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, obviously I can't say there's not gonna be any issues, but I, I can say that I would do everything I can. I want, I want to remain, I wanna be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
Right, and I've, I think I've gone above and beyond with, you know, with what I've done so far, considering that technically I don't need any, you know, we don't need any signature, but I think it's the right thing to do was to go and try and be as transparent as possible about the whole thing and just say, look, here are the, you know, here are all the things we're considering. Kind of, not as in-depth as perhaps what I've, um, done with you guys, but, you know, kind of a dumb damn version of that, that, you know, we wanna stay here, we wanna be a neighbor and, you know, so-
And not that it's any of our purview and, and, you know, we are just, you know, approving the, you know, the final, you know, final site plan and that kind of thing, but, but I just wanted to understand, make sure that, that those things have been discussed and thoroughly thought out, because once this, this process is over, you don't want people to have like a very, very bad sour taste in their mouth and then, you know, you've got, you know, neighbors that just, you know, Hatfield and McCoys and that kind of thing. But, um, you know, it sounds like you, you've, you've done, you know, you've looked, crossed every T and dotted every I and it seems like a really good process and I'm just hoping that, that there's no little things that pop up. I just have one quick question, this is just very esoteric. What is a four over one window?
Uh, it's a, you know, the, the muttons or the grills?
Oh, oh.
So it's four up top and then one on the bottom.
I thought it was like some news, I'd never heard of that before.
That, that's a window term I learned.
And it's, that's a requirement with the Kentlands, that you must have some sort of-
Grills.
Grills.
Mounds. Mounds, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Mounds are big, mounds are small.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, good, any questions? Uh, no questions. Okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Please just step up to the podium, please. Um, come on up, state your name and address, if you wanna give your address, just the neighborhood's fine and-
Uh, my name's Mary Whitmore, I live at one-twenty-two Thirdgood Street, which is a townhouse, uh, directly across the street. Okay, hi. Um, I just have a few questions. Um, first of all, my understanding, um, of the Kentlands process, unless it's changed, was there supposed to be a visual change application, which is submitted if you're going to change the color of your house? Um, the number of panes in your window, um, and various and sundry other items. I know that when I had, I don't know, I had issues where I've had to submit visual change applications. I don't know who is the target of those visual change applications. I'm not directly across the street from the Steggles, I'm, I mean, there's a whole rows of townhouses, like eight or ten or twelve townhouses. I know that they tried to contact me, I was not at home, and they informed me that this was something that would, they had planned on trying to accomplish. Um, however, I never signed off on a visual change application, so that's my concern. Um, this is the first time I've seen the, um, plan and what the front is gonna look like from my house. Um, that's one concern. And, you know, I like the Steggles, I love Oliver and Penelope and they're all wonderful. Um, so I'm really not concerned with, you know, I don't wanna cause any problems for them. Um, you know, they've been delightful neighbors. Um, I do understand that there's been some significant problems with parking on our street. And you can only park on one side of the street, which is the townhouse side, not the Steggles side of the street. So that has been a problem. And I think part of the problem, I tried to think of, why is this a problem now? Well, when, I've lived there, I'm the original owner of the townhouse, I've been there for twenty-two years, there was nothing there when I moved. It was just grassland and hills. Um, and people were cross-country skiing in a, a snowstorm across the street where they live now. So I have fond memories of, uh, when I moved in there. I guess if people moved in, and a lot of them were, um, working young couples and, um, all of a sudden they had kids, and the kids were all little and it was great, because they went to the pool and the clubhouse and it was close. And then all of a sudden the kids grew up. And now the kids are driving cars and going to college and all those kids now have had their own cars. When I was growing up, which was a long time ago, my dad had one car and none of us had cars and we, you know, tried to borrow the car. So, I think that's part of the issue, it's just a matter of time passing and, um, you know, kids' needs and, um, so I guess the concern I'm looking at now from the visual change is, I know, I think you have a two-car garage and then possibility to park four cars in front, so six cars. Um, and I'm assuming that's gonna be the same situation-
Yeah.
-for the change.
Right.
So, um-
Yeah, yeah, the Kentlands were very clear about that we, the garage cannot be brought forward, because they wanted the, the, the way they described it was, you should be able to put two cars on your driveway and a neighbor should not be on that porch way and be able to see them, right? So you, you can't, because they should be kind of towards the back of the house. In addition, just anticipating in the future, we have, um, what's really flagged as a shed in the back of the, the garage that if we ever needed to, could be turned into a, a, a third car i- in the garage. I mean, I can't imagine ever needing that, but, you know, it's, it's a big concern and, and that's, you know, in fact, there's, you know, potentially more parking space with the new thing than there is with, with the, the current one, so-
Well, I'm just thinking when all of your kids grow up and they all want their own cars, you know.
And I think to paraphrase the, the zoning requirement, when, when parking calculations were done for the master plan, for the, for the, for that neighborhood, for that, that's, uh, phase of the neighborhood, what effectively we're looking at is a plan that doesn't net, doesn't impact that, that gross calculation. You know, regardless of who contributes to the parking on or off-street and all that, the parking that was there, um, in the approved plan is, is still there, so that hasn't been impacted, which is, which is good. Um, are, are you done with your questions? I'm, I'm sorry to-
I think I am, yes, yeah.
Maybe Jasmine, you could comment on, um, the, the neighborhood's process for the visual change application where I, I don't wanna jump in, but I believe that, that, that concerns existing houses, I don't think it, it concerns new construction, but relative to the way that the KCA works and the way the, the reviews worked in the neighborhood, I'm assuming that was covered in whatever reviews that have been done, is that fair?
Yeah, we, we made sure that they received the approvals from the KCA before we even moved forward with the application.
Which would have included the same criteria, I guess, as the, that application, okay. Um, all right, anyone else that would like to comment or, please?
Uh, my name is Hans Steiger, I live directly opposite from Andy's house at one-three-two Thirdgood Street. And, uh, I never, uh, as Andy explained, I never signed the, uh, visual change application. For some odd reason, we never managed to get together. I did sign the original application for the easement of the conversation area, but at that time we were talking about, uh, leaving the front of, or as Andy explained at the time, leaving the front of the house and just making changes at the back. So this new, um, plan to have a completely new house, I never signed up on this. Um, I, uh, I'm not the, by the way, I'm not the neighbor who, we have maybe objected, just to make that clear. I have no objection against the house, but, um, when we discussed it at the time with Andy, I raised a couple of concerns, like, which was brought up, you sir, about the working hours, and I was given an assurance that, um, the contractors would stick to the Kentlands arrangements. I was concerned about dust and dirt. My, one of my main concerns was the parking situation. Um, I'm talking about for very, I feel like, uh, egotistic reasons, my mother-in-law lives with me. She is eighty-eight years old, she can hardly walk and so she just makes it from the front door to when we pick her up in front. So I was given an assurance that there would be no restriction on the existing car, uh, parking spaces. And for the record, I want to insist on that. So if ever somebody comes around and says these parking bays have been suspended or so, I'd be really, really upset.
Are you having during construction or, or just during-
During construction, during the construction, yeah. So I would be really, really upset if that was going to happen. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I think, um, maybe as a reassurance, both the city, um, and certainly the, the property manager can help, help assist that if there's any kind of interference, maybe Trudy or Frank, you guys could comment on what it would take, if anything, to, to, to reserve parking, um, or if that ever happens, if that's even a poss- a remote possibility.
Well, um, as you all know, living in Kentlands, you've been a part of our five K where we do close down streets and things like that. Usually if something's gonna happen that- that the parking spaces would be asked to not be used for, you know, I would say, an eight-hour period, so that they can move construction equipment in, they would have to request that of the city, and that notice would be put up about it, and I'm sure that, um, based on Mr. Stiegel, that, you know, he would be there talking with you about that too, because he would know about that schedule. Um, I don't know that we've done that for construction projects, um, but usually, if it has been done, it's only for like a one-day period.
Trudy, can I interrupt?
Yes.
You do that though for moving vans, don't you? When moving vans come in and out, there's people moving in and out of houses?
We usually don't.
Oh, it's not the, the city?
No, people sort of, usually, and, and this happens also in my neighborhood, which is, you know, not that, but people say, hey, we're having a moving van come in.
Right.
Can you move your car for this time period?
Okay, but there's nothing about...
Do you want me to press those up, huh?
Yeah, I, well, those signs have to come in my garage.
Well, to that point, you know, there's going to be a lot of construction workers there, and, and then that means that there'll be parking. Is there any way, I mean, I, there's clearly no way to construct, but I guess as a courtesy, could you, is there a way to ask them to maybe park a little further away? I mean, I don't, I don't know, how's that handled?
I, I mean, we really don't have any, it's a public street.
Right.
It's a public street, and, um, you know, you all have the right to park there, just as, as well as the neighbors, but, um, as they've talked about, is utilizing the existing driveway for parking for that. Um, I don't know if that's, I mean, that's not something the city really regulates, unless there was a specific construction plan that you would have seen as part of this. Um, rarely do we have that, except for, you know, traffic and marking sign plants, which we don't have.
Okay.
I don't know how it was handled over in Washingtonian Woods, um, for your construction workers.
Um, you know, typically, if there are, um, like, bigger teams coming, like that, you know, framing crew, a lot of times they'll come in one vehicle, and, um, it, it sounds like, uh, you know, we need to do a little preparation planning with our, with our crews and, and, and just talk about, you know, the consolidating vehicles, so we keep the vehicles to a minimum, and, um, and, and also be careful about overlapping trades, so that we, we don't have, you know, trades stacked up on one another, and, and, you know, looking for places to park or, um, so, yeah, it, it's going to take a little bit of thinking, but that's what we do, I mean, that's part of our planning and preparation.
Good.
So, you know, if there's a, a, uh, notice format, um, or form that, that we should be using, you know, there may be certain events that are going to be busier than others, um, uh, but I think if we plan for it, communicate, um, and are conscientious ourselves on parking resources that, that we're going to be requiring based on our scheduling, um, and tie it to that, I think we can get through it.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's coming on the, on the homeowner and the, you all as a team, to, to be very transparent to the neighbors, immediate neighbors, about, about activity and let them, and be open to their, their concerns all the way through it. So if there are days that are particularly trying, you know, work through what might be some remote parking or some careful cha- staging of the, of the deliveries, and, um, I have no doubt that, that, based on the presentation I saw, there's, there's every intent to do that, so as long as those communication channels remain open, I think, I think you'll be fine. Um, any other comments from the audience tonight before we get into the recommendation? Okay. Um, so to be clear, um, I think if there's any concern about the, the HOA, I'm saying generically the homeowners decision, but it's either the Kentland Citizens Assembly or the Kentland Historic Trust, and I'm not entirely sure where they cross in the process on this particular project, um, but they both have a piece of this, um, please contact them and ask if, if everything is, and I'm sort of referring generally to the audience, if there's any concerns about that process. Ruth Sally White is in the back of the, back of the crowd here, she can probably answer it on the fly, not, not necessarily on the record, but after the meeting. Um, uh, you know, if, if you have any concerns that, that sort of internal processes, from our perspective, we're looking again at a zoning ordinance that requires us to make findings on the compatibility of the project, um, and, um, we do defer to things like the, the HOA processes, to be sure those aren't, those aren't, um, bypassed, and it sounds like they have not been, so, um, I think that satisfies at least from our perspective what needs to happen there. But if you have more concerns, I would, I would, please direct you to the HOA contacts, I'm going to say Ruth Sally's right there, so she can, she can help understand that. Um, that's the good news, you don't have to make any phone calls. Yeah.
Dennis. Were, are we in the discussion process, or did you want to wrap up or say anything?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
I, I do, I would like to see a condition, and we can talk about this, I would like to see a condition added, that during the construction and deconstruction process, that we strictly adhere to the, the start and stop times that are, that have been defined.
Well, it's city code, so really...
It's code, so we don't have to worry about that?
We don't have to worry.
But during the deconstruction as well?
Yes, it's, any noise, and when you're mowing your lawn.
Right, okay, I, I just...
And, and certainly, you know, if you hear it, please call us, because we will be out there to enforce any noise.
I know this is not our purview, but just to avoid, I mean, once it's all done, people like, ugh, you know, that, that kind of thing, you know, and, you know, it's all, that's just my concern.
I was going to say, people say that when the sun comes up.
We can, we can, yeah, break it like that.
And, and the good news is, this, this appears to be, um, a shorter process than, than, than a, than a, a major renov- no, a major renovation, by the way.
Oh, okay, that's true.
In the same, in the same context, so, so this, this perhaps will end up being a little bit more, uh,
Okay.
more clean in terms of the, the noise and disruption. All right, um, so let me get the recommendation, the ultimate discussion, how about that? So Jasmine, if you want to wrap up with the recommendation, please.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff reports, staff findings, and staff recommendations grant AFP dash seven 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 zero dash two thousand seventeen amendment to final site, amendment to final site plan approval, finding compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city's zoning ordinance with the fa- uh, with the following three conditions, and when you read out the three conditions?
Um, sure.
Okay. Uh, the first condition is applicant to update final site plans to address minor labeling and editing errors to be approved by staff prior to the issuance of any permits. Condition due, condition due, uh, prior to the issuance of any permits, applicant must submit a revised demolition plan to relocate the proposed filter log three feet from the conservation easement and provide behind the filter log wooden stakes and, uh, with wiring and flagging. And condition three, applicant to confirm with staff that the proposed overhangs will not encroach in the non-construction easement and are fully contained within the applicant's property prior to the issuance of any permits.
Okay. Now ordinarily, when we get to a, a site plan, um, we do approve materials on the, on the building?
Materials?
Well, I shouldn't say, I, I should put it a different way, it's usually presented in its final form. Now, I know technically, um, our site plan approval doesn't, doesn't really vest, well, it does, materials, we, we, we gauge it against design criteria or design guidelines. Um, so I know there's still some...
But because this was a planned neighborhood development, we had a set of design guidelines we really approved.
Right.
And so then we have another, you want another, um, condition that says whatever materials are approved need to meet the Kentlands?
Exactly, because there's still some in flux, and I just, just for the record, we want to make sure we know, we acknowledge it's got to comply with those, those guidelines. I don't know, um, you know, whether or not, oh, Ruth Sally, you have, you know, offer some insight. Now, you're not standing up as a commissioner, you're standing up as a...
No, I'm standing as the, um, representative of the Kentland Historic Trust.
Oh, is she?
Ruth Sally White, one twenty-five Hard Road. Um, I, I just wanted to clarify, clarify, there was some discussion about the, um, the windows, the colors of the windows, and so, um, at our second time reviewing the application, which I have been part of, um, we did have some questions about the color, um, having a different color other than white, which is something that is, uh, still pending. Now, there is no requirements in the code for it to be white, and upon reviewing a couple of previous applications, there has actually have been about four to five, um, already approved windows that are tint, uh, that are black, um, within the community. Um, I think you can see, um, Diane Dornis' unit, uh, has, um, black windows now, and so, um, we decided to remove that as one of the conditions, and, um, upon receiving the information that they will be changing manufacturer, it will be a matter of, you know, it being with the, within the approved list, list rather than the color. Um, but we have reviewed the materials and we have reviewed the, um, the application in its entirety to this point.
Yeah, and I think, um, thanks, thanks for that, I think we're always headed with that comment, was I, I just know that based on the record, you're going to, if somebody were to read the record, they would see something about some decisions still to be made about the materials, and I don't want our approval tonight to, um, preclude wrapping that up. In other words, if, if you're just, oh, well, the planning commission already said, okay, already approved this, we're not changing anything. Not, not, I, I understand the spirit of this is not about that at all, but just, just from a technical and a record perspective, the condition would just simply defer to whatever the design guideline or the, the criteria is from the KCA, that's, that's all I'm proposing, so that it isn't, it isn't implied that what we're approving is, is the exact color palette and materials presented, because we didn't actually go through all of that and, and resolve it all, because there were still some, some pending. Does that make sense?
Yes. It does, so does that need to be, um, a condition?
Yeah.
But, I don't know, it's, it's like a prophylactic condition, it's like a weird kind of like protective thing, you know, it's like, I don't really...
That's a better word.
Well, it's, 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 uh, I don't quite understand what the use of it will be. Like, is it, we don't want it to come back because we may have approved something intended for it.
Technically, we're the final, technically, we're the final approval, right, and so, so the, there's an open issue on the materials, and my condition is that simply, and, and this would actually go to staff.
Yeah.
Staff to resolve any open material color issues with, to, to comply with the, the HOA guidelines.
That sounds right.
Is really what I'm after. Ju- just to, just to button up that side of the record. Does that make sense?
That sounds great, yeah.
So we have a fourth condition.
All right, okay. And I, I'm not sure I read that in as cleanly as it needs to be. Um, you want to take a crack at it, or?
Okay, you repeat, wow.
What's that?
Can you repeat the condition?
So, do you mind if I just clarify?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is, the fourth condition is that we must have the full and final approval by the Kentlands?
For the materials and color, exactly.
Now, this would be prior to the issuance of permits.
Right. And, and act, and in technical terms, it's really just the staff confirming that it all complies with that. We don't, we don't even need to see a letter from the Kentlands per se, it's, it's really the staff just resolving whatever the open issues are on, on materials and colors, and, and we know that it'll, it needs to comply with the guideline, the adopted guidelines, so, um, it just puts it, puts us in a position of saying that what you presented tonight is the final one, uh, final approval on the materials and color. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm looking for. So applicant to staff to resolve the final color and materials.
Well, how about we have the condition applicant, the applicant to coordinate with staff, um, and the KHT, um, the final materials.
That's fine, too.
Prior to, prior to building permit?
Prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for that. Um, okay, now, now, based on the, the basic stuff, um, I think I'm comfortable with the proposed height change, I'm comfortable with the comfortable, or uncomfortable with the proposed massing of the building, um, it appears that the, the overall, um, uh, design of the facade is consistent with the streetscape that's, that's already established there, all of that seems to make sense. Um, I'm not a wholeheartedly endorsing the idea of buying out of the, for the conservation easement, but that's already been worked out, and that's, that's certainly within your right and, and the, the legal, legal parameter to set forth to do that, so, um, you know, that needs to, needs, that can move forward, but, um, I think in terms of a compatibility issue, I don't see that this is not, not compatible with the rest of the neighborhood, and, um, kind of on a larger philosophical level, um, if we're going to see some redevelopment within the, within the, um, the neighborhood, and I think that's, that's a healthy sign, frankly, I'd love to, I'd love to see the way you've done it, which is very thorough and thoughtful and, you know, trying to, trying to
I agree.
wrap in, um, all those concerns. It'll never be a hundred percent, but,
Right.
you know, you've, you've certainly done, done the diligent, due diligence to, to make it, make it work as best as, as it can. So, um, I think it's a great example project about how this can construct and move forward, so, um, I don't have any reservations.
I think it certainly sets a high bar, which is great.
Yeah.
And, um, you might, I think, I'd probably share your hinted concern, which is just the setting back of the conservation easement in relation to the other two, we have had problems in the city of understanding what that conservation easement is and how you can and can't use it, and what it's for, you know, what the sort of general purpose was for in the original site plan, and why that land was put into easement, and so I'm, I'm just a little concerned, maybe not today for this application, but the next one, to make sure we understand, uh, the neighbors understand the hurdles, Herculean or Sisyphistic, I don't know which, but it's, you know, the hurdles that they had to go through to get this conservation easement moved, you know, is whether, yeah, so whether it's, uh, you know, whether it's, uh, there's an understanding by the neighbors that all of a sudden they can, you know, bulldoze the next twenty-five feet of their property without going through these hurdles, it's not, you know, it's, there's, there might be an opportunity for some education there that, you know, that these lots up against this large green area that maybe is incumbent on us as a city, not necessarily as, um, the applicant, but, so that was my only real concern. I think there's, um, uh, it shows a wonderful high bar of, frankly, development standards that the applicants brought forward to us that, uh, I'm impressed by and, and, um, really eager to see the, see the redevelopment.
And that's saying a lot.
It is saying a lot.
It's hard to impress, man.
That you've impressed him.
And we haven't even saw it in building yet, so it takes a team of lawyers to get all those utilities on board, so it's, I'm pretty impressed.
Good work, okay.
One quick question, uh, the white picket fence, does that remain during the reconstruction and the demo, or does the white picket fence come down?
I, I have no idea.
And will it be a replacement for the white picket fence once it's completed? Because I didn't see that in the...
Yeah, I'm hoping to get, um, like, black, yeah, it's, um,
Okay.
iron metal.
Because that is as required by, uh, Kentland standards, uh, that there's a hardscape.
I, I think the, the screen is going to go all the way around it, but, the, the white picket fence at the front?
Yes.
Will the screen go around it, will it just be removed?
I, I think realistically, it's, I just...
Microphone, sorry.
Yeah, the, so the fence, I would suspect will probably come out during the...
The demo?
Yeah.
Okay, just...
I, I, I would like to promise it's going to stay and survive, but...
It's going to be replaced at the end anyway, so.
Yeah, it's just the requirement, that's all.
Sure. All right, any other concerns?
No, let's go to it.
All right, so we've got, um, proposed approval with now four conditions, any, any more discussion on the conditions, or?
No.
No, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, um, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff reports, staff findings, and staff recommendations, grant approval to AFP seven seven, excuse me, AFP dash seven 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 zero dash two zero one seven amendment to final plan, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city zoning ordinance with the four conditions that we discussed this evening.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck, nice work with the presentation.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it finished.
All right, um, that takes us to, from the commission, Lloyd, may I start with you, please? Uh, just want to follow up again on, uh, I had written a letter to members of the, uh, copy, to members of the planning commission, as well as to, uh, sending out another, uh, letter to, uh, members of the, uh, council and the mayor regarding, uh, Kentlands, Kentlands Boulevard, and the update on that. Uh, this has been pending now for almost a year and a half, not longer, and I wrote a letter back on the seventy-eighth, two thousand sixteen, spelling out what we had discussed at one of our previous meetings, and was told about the two thousand seventeen CIP, uh, budget, and, uh, to this date, nothing's been done on Kentlands Boulevard to enhance the crosswalks or for safety purposes. And I'm, I, I, you know, we keep kicking the can, and I use this loosely, down the road, Kentlands Boulevard specifically, and, uh, I'd just like to know what, what's going to happen with this, because, uh, the other day, again, I was walking across the street, car did not see me, and I stood there right in the middle, he almost hit me, because of the lighting situation at night. There's one light that works because it was knocked down, and when it was put back up, it's by the restaurant that was on the corner, when it was put back up, the shade, the bulb was not replaced, and it's a direct light, and that gives the most amount of light at the crosswalk, but the other three spots are dull, and the crosswalk itself is wholly unidentifiable at night. So I just wanted to bring that up again.
It's, it's all but faded off, it's, it's, really, there's no contrast at all now on this crosswalk.
And just wanted to get an update.
And from a planning standpoint, we've got a lot of development that's coming into us, you know, from applications for both sides of the road.
Yeah.
So it's really, it's going to become more and more of an issue, a planning issue. Uh, there's, it's a safety issue, public safety issue, obviously, but it becomes more and more of a planning issue.
Well, can you advise, how do we get, how do we raise the priority here?
I'm waiting for a response from Public Works, and one of the things that I know last week we were, um, humorously talking about just going out there and painting, it's not just a going out there and painting job that... It's not just a going out there and painting job that needs to be done because, as you know, the pavement has worn, there are pavement markers that need to be removed, and that is what is being put in forth for the CIP.
Trudy, that was not being done lightly. That was stated specifically by Public Works that they had some money left over from the previous year and that they were going to do some enhancements immediately. That's not just painting over, but whatever they had in mind.
I know what we were talking about. And there is something in the CIP. We've totally changed our CIP process, and the city manager's office has also been a part of this conversation and is looking into it.
Can you give me a timeline?
No, I cannot.
I can see.
I mean, we keep asking.
I know. We'll keep, we'll keep our foot on the pedal then.
Yeah.
Just keep pushing on it. I appreciate it. Thank you, Trudy.
Okay. Thanks, Lloyd.
That's good.
Danny?
Nothing tonight.
Matt, anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
Ruth Sally, anything tonight?
Well, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update of the strategic visioning process that we're going, we're undergoing for Main Street. We had the team for Lip, Roll, and Play. It's the consulting company that the Kentland Committee, the foundation in partnership with the KCA have hired to come together, and they will reach out to all the stakeholders within the downtown and have a very successful visit. So we're eagerly awaiting until the next time, and then hopefully by April or next, we will have a lecture on April 17th, and we're hoping for the results of that strategic visioning process to be presented at that time. So we're very hopeful that this will bring about some rejuvenation for our Main Street.
Great. Now, what date?
April 17.
April 17.
Tax Day. Something to take your mind off. Celebrate the milestone.
All right, great. Thank you for that update. Greg, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. So last night, during the policy discussion for SDP-77112-2017, which was Kentland Square Shopping Center, which was the Saul pad site, if you remember, the council announced the indefinite reopening of their record in order to, for the applicant to revise their plans to address the planning commission's third condition, which was added, as you remember, during your recommendation, related to the relocation of the drive-through.
Correct.
So per Section 24-198(c)(II), the upcoming redesign will have to be resubmitted to the planning commission for further consideration and recommendation to council. And as such, staff is recommending the commission this evening announce the indefinite reopening of their record for SDP-77-12-2017 until such time as the applicant has completed their SDP plan revision.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, food in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Second. Aye.
Danny, you in for your favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, the record is now back open.
Definitely.
And then there's a joint work session next Monday, January 22nd, that's for Kentland's Apartments. And the joint public hearing for the master plan, historic preservation element, is February 20th. And then I guess.
Greg, let me jump in, excuse me. So Maryam, are you good for next week's, the polling for next week's meeting? Did you hear back?
We have three right now.
Okay, so we're covered.
I'm not here, so.
Oh, that's fine. You don't have to let us, just to make sure we have the numbers to cover, so we're good next week.
We have three.
Okay. And then you just sent out the polling, I think, for the next meeting, so we'll hear back in the next week or so. Okay.
And then our next meeting's February 7th.
All right, great. Thanks, Greg. Trudy, anything tonight?
Yes, I wanted to let you know that our colleagues in Montgomery County and Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning is doing a Economic Future of the Suburbs series for their winter speaker series. The first one was on December the 6th, and it's, is online, it was on Infill. And next Wednesday, they're going to talk about commerce. And it's been, the two speakers are Heather Arnold and Peter McLaughlin. And they can be viewed online. It's from 6:00 until 7:30. They can be viewed on, at the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning website, and I'll send that to you, that link.
Is it at their building?
It's at their building, yes.
On George Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the next, the one in February is on placemaking, so.
Great.
Heather's always great. She's brilliant.
Yeah. Haven't seen her before.
Great, all right, thanks. All right, anything else from either end or over there?
Frank? I will note that the General Assembly for the state is in session, and as Will Rogers said, that means no one's entirely safe. And that'll go until April. I'm not aware, there are some years where you know right up front there are major land use issues or planning issues for us to be aware of, or perhaps open meetings or something